And call this meeting to order. This is the Tuesday, November 20th, 2018. Planning Commission meeting for the Village of Oxford, being held in the council chambers here in Oxford, Michigan. It's seven o'clock now, so I call this meeting to order. If you'll please stand and join me in saying a pledge of allegiance to the flag, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, thank you very much. All right. Madam Secretary, if you'd be kind enough to call the roll, please.
Sure. Pylek, here.
Neymar?
Here.
Curtis?
Here.
Douglas?
Here.
Helmut?
Yes.
Johnson is absent and Deeg absent.
That's correct.
Did we hear from them?
I heard from Gary Deeg and from Adam Johnson, and also I heard from Commissioner Curtis, but we're glad to have him here tonight instead.
I'll make a motion to exclude Commissioner Deeg and Commissioner Johnson from the Planning Commission meeting on November 20th.
Second.
Okay. Madam Secretary, I have a motion on the floor to excuse the absence of these two absent commissioners. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Good. All right, thank you very much for that. Okay, going on to approval of the agenda for tonight's meeting. Thank you.
I approve the Village of Oxford Planning Commission agenda for Tuesday, November 20th, 2018.
Support.
All right. Madam Secretary, I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda and support. All those in favor of approving this agenda as written signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. Good, we have an approved agenda. Thank you. Now I'll entertain our approval of minutes.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the special meeting minutes of October 30th, 2018.
Second.
All right, that's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, say nay. All right, good, we have that. All right. Madam Secretary, I'm assuming we have no correspondence that's been submitted since our last meeting, is that correct?
That's correct.
All right, we move on. We are not holding a public hearing tonight, so I'll not consider that. We do have old business for consideration tonight. We're looking at the ordinance amendment for outside display sales. We have a proposed ordinance language memorandum dated September 27th, 2018. Mario, we're very glad to have you here this evening. Thank you very much for taking time out of your busy schedule to come and spend time with us. Please make us a presentation in regards to our old business.
Recently, with regards to this issue, the village manager had sent an email around summarizing some of the various topics related to the outdoor display ordinance. And so I thought it would be a good opportunity to just go through his questions, because they do, they very succinctly address each raised issue, except for one that I realized later. But I, so I've submitted a memo via email, and it should be in your packets, from yesterday, November 19th. And if you'd like, we can just go through it step by step, and it'll basically, for each issue that is raised, I just state what's currently proposed. And then you can indicate whether you agree with it, you'd like to change it one way or the other. I think that might be the quick.
Go ahead.
I just have a quick question, because I loved the email that was sent. I got a lot of notes on it. But one thing that I noticed was, do we actually have a definition in the zoning ordinance of outdoor display and outdoor sales?
Great question, because that's the first question on the memo. And so.
Nailed it!
Yep. So if you flip to page one of the proposed ordinances, the text that's just in regular font, and in black, if you have a colored version, is what the existing language is. And also, as proposed, language that is struck through is actually existing as well. So on page one, the very top, under definitions, we do have a definition of open-air businesses. And it begins with that first sentence, and then it has the unless otherwise specified herein, subparaphrase A, B, C, and D, that's in strikeout. So that's our existing language. That's what we currently define.
So would that be outdoor sales or display?
Well, that's the thing. Technically, there is no outdoor display, sales, definition at all. The only definition we do have is for an open-air business, right now.
That was my problem. You've got someone who has something that they sell inside a building and put it outside so people see it. That's outside display. You have people that sell things that keep it outside, that's outside storage.
Right.
Okay, open-air business, like a farmer's market, you know, they're open-air. They don't have a building, they rent somebody's property and leave their stuff there and have stuff for sale. Outdoor display, to me, is somebody that is open from six to six and has their stuff out there of value that you wouldn't want to leave out overnight to be stolen.
So the way, correct, so the way that, so I think you brought up a distinction, because in the memo, it mainly talks about whether it should be open-air business or outdoor display sales, but possibly we need a definition of outdoor storage. Currently, as proposed, what we would define, we kind of have storage under both, and there's no real distinction for storage. So open-air businesses, under the italicized, underlined version, that's, that would be the new definition on page one. And that would be, the only distinction, the main distinction I'm right now proposing is the timeframe, that the fact that open-air business is primarily conducted all the time, outdoor, and they do everything. They display, they store, and they have, conduct sales, outdoor, in the open-air business. And then the new definition below that, under italicized, underlined, is a brand-new definition for outdoor display sales, but that definition does say, the storage, display, or sales of some or all goods, for six months or less. So it's a matter of, how you want to make that distinction? Is it time? Is it just those three different ones? Storage, sales, and, and storage, display, and just a regular open-air business, as you were saying, Jim? Now, how do you, how do you want to define them?
Okay, how do we define used car lots? Go to, what article is that under?
It's under separate provision, because it's a category.
Because that's automotive sales.
What article is that?
It's a permitted use.
I can find out in a second here.
I'm looking for it, and I can't find the article. I know it's a separate provision, I know it's under automotive, but I can't find it.
You work in the church.
That's where I'm looking through the whole book.
At the bottom of the church.
And typically, because of the size and scale of those, those are specifically called out on their own as automotive, auto-oriented displays, auto-oriented sales, because it's basically a given, that some component of that is the outdoor storage, and.
4.1 point, well, 4.1.4 is talking about automotive or vehicle dealers. Each 49.
29.
49.
Oh, 58, under state license, okay. 49. Yeah, I understand they're under a special provision, but here's what I'm looking at. You have businesses that are open, that bring their stuff out and set it out, just like the saddle shop, just like any other businesses long-term. So now what you're doing is going to see one transition and saying, you can't bring stuff outside and show it, that's, that's what you sell, and then bring it in at night. That, to me, is outside display. Outside storage is, you have, and I always go back to the car sales, you know, you can't store them inside, they're too big. Or any item that's too big, that you can't get into all one building, they're outside. You're storing them outside while you sell them. So there's three real categories.
That's what I was thinking. It sounds to me like there's three categories, Mario. And I would guess, then, that we want to, we may want to consider defining each one of these categories, like you've got at the beginning of Article II definitions. And then later, deeper in the article, go into regulations that are pertinent to each one of those definitions. Does that make sense?
Yes, definitely. And then, so, so we'll have.
So we had a whole new definition of outdoor display, and a whole new definition of outdoor storage, is that what we're saying?
That, that's what I would look at.
I don't necessarily disagree. I just want to make sure we're all talking about the same thing.
That's kind of the way I interpreted it, Mo.
Well, right now, as proposed, we have this language. It says, outdoor display sales, and it does say temporary. The storage, display, or sales of some or all goods, which is not within a fully enclosed building, as defined by the building code, and occurs for six months or less in a 12-month period.
So an example of that.
It could be.
Is fireworks.
Uh.
Or is that, is that under a separate?
Technically, it could be fireworks, but fireworks sales aren't.
Christmas trees.
Yes. Well, Christmas trees, yep.
You know, to me, that's an, or a farmer's market, like Jack said. You know, to me, that's, that's a traditional open-air business.
Right.
It does not have a facility. It might have a temporary shelter set up, like a tent.
Right.
But things, I don't know if fireworks are in a separate group or not, but fireworks, Christmas trees, farmer's market, things like that, to me, are an open-air business, correct? Or.
I don't want to talk about open-air businesses.
Okay.
I want to talk about Funky Monkey, who wants to come out and put追捕游戏 along the sidewalk every day, and then take them back in at six o'clock at night.
Okay, so that's, that's an outdoor display.
And actually, that's something that, under your current ordinance, not, not this particular ordinance right here, but because, in your general law ordinance, property owners in the CBD.
Okay, I picked Funky Monkey, just because I like Funky. It could be.
Any store.
Who's it?
Well, that's.
113, South Washington.
113?
Yeah, or any of them. The photographer.
You got the saddle replaced, they put stuff outside.
And one of your businesses?
Cave man, put stuff outside.
One of your businesses is a cave man? Just name a business, Chuck. Name one of your frickin' businesses!
It's not a C-1 transition, though.
They're all C-1 transition, but I don't have any of my businesses in any of my buildings that put anything outside.
Okay, none of you can think outside the box.
I've got hair salons, I got.
Where are you going?
Say Lakeland Salt Water, it's in the C-1 transition.
Right.
And they want to bring their salt out every day, and take it back in every night.
Right.
That's not an open-air business.
No.
That's outdoor display.
That's right.
So that I could see, yeah, so we could.
And it has nothing to do with 180 days a year.
No, I understand where you're going. So what I'm trying to say is that, that would be a very, probably a very simple way to do it, because right now, that's a right of property owners in the CBD. They're allowed to, every day, put something out in front of their storefronts in the downtown, within three feet. What you're saying is you want to allow that.
Lakeland Salt Water's not in the C-1.
Right, right, that's, so we can change that, so we can change that. And then, to address the one issue, yeah, then we could have something where a property owner, as a permitted use, would be allowed to do outdoor display of items, as long as they're put out and taken in every day.
Berdick Street Landscaping wants to put a lawnmower out on their front lawn.
Right.
Every day, and take it back in every night. That's outdoor display.
Right.
Correct.
Exactly, but also, that's also, he's going to have a bone of contention, because when he.
I don't want to know what his bone of contention is. I'm just saying what we want to allow.
Leslie?
I just want to clarify a couple of things, so that I don't lose track here. Currently, Mario, you're proposing the definition for open-air business with the expansion, and my copy, it's in blue, underscored, in place of what is read in my copy, that's struck through. So you're proposing clarifying what open-air business is there, adding outdoor display sales with that description. And then, did you say something a few minutes ago, like maybe we need to add a definition of outdoor storage?
Yes. Yeah, because, because this, these, the main two distinctions between these two, as currently proposed, is the timeframe.
Right.
One being, right, one business that's open, basically, year-round, and one that just wants to do it temporarily. But it also makes the assumption that they would be doing all activity, storage, display, and sales, and, on the site, and regardless of separating them.
But some of the examples that have just been mentioned are really more if the CBD permit were extended. So now that's a fourth change, and I'm tracking that crap.
Right, and I think that could be pretty straightforward. We could just look at allowing in all the, mainly just say, outdoor display sales, and then say, businesses within, so that's a question. Do we want to have them in, in all commercial zoning districts? I would think that'd probably be the easiest, but I mean, we can, we can choose which districts we want them in.
Could, would it be possible to expand the grid or table that you have provided to incorporate all of this in it, or would you have?
Yeah, totally, yeah.
I think it would be useful to see it all in one place, because I think that the confusion that I know I'm having is, certain things are addressed here, certain things are addressed there, and if there's a way to put it all together, it'll be easier for everybody to understand.
Right. So I, and I think that if that was one of the issues, is allowing this right of displaying items, you know, during the day, just as a right of a business owner, I think that's something that could be easily changed. And Mo, just like you said, it would be, we write a definition for outdoor display of items, and that's property, a business placing items in front of their place of business and removing them at night, you know, then that, then, then we would just define where, which districts you'd want it in, and then that'd be pretty straightforward.
Mario, you just said something very interesting, and it caught my ear as it went by, the idea of expanding this to all the commercial zones. And, you know, I'm inclined to think that's not a bad idea, because I know if we do this just for C-1 transition right now, we'll be back here in six months talking about it again, when somebody who's not in C-1T and not in C-1 core wants to have outdoor display of, of things at their place.
Right.
You know, so that's probably something that we might want to, you know, I throw that out there and say, let's not let that get by unless everybody thinks that's not a good idea, because it strikes me as a really good idea.
In the C-1 district, it's very specific about how far the building you can have, from the building you can have your outdoor display.
Right.
So we have to look at that, in the C-1 transition, and in every other district, if we're going to expand past the C-1, because they're not all the same. You start getting into driveways, you know, in the C-1 district, you don't have driveways. It's all, there's maybe two driveways. So I, I would really like to focus on the C-1, and then, if we want to expand it, expand it, but get through the C-1 transition.
All right.
Is my personal preference, because that's the task.
I also think that the definition of storage, and what's the impact of storage, which might take place, you know, more than 180 days a year, you know, might include after-hours or whatever, is, is potentially greater in a more negative sense than temporary displays that are related to business operations, where when those materials are managed, they're brought in. I don't know, did you have a thought about, if you pulled storage out, how you would go about defining that, or proposing a definition?
Well, once again, this is talking about the only distinction being time. I think if we, we say outdoor display sales, and then, and if we just restrict storage, and then specifically say, taking in, taking in and out, that eliminates a storage option. And so I think you're right, the storage, and, and the other thing about that, the reason why there's display, sales, and storage, I think, is storage usually implies, you know, someone having a pallet of the ice, of the snowmelt, and they leave it there.
Right.
Like, the truck comes and drops it off, and then it's stored there. And that's outdoor storage, and that's, that's specifically identified in other areas. And, but I think some of the, the uses, the businesses that want to have displays, they want, it's not so much that they're, they're not storing multiple copy, multiple lawn mowers out in the front, they're putting one out, or they're putting one art piece out, and then it's just staying there. So that's, I don't know if you could call that, I mean, I guess it's storage of an individual item, but typically, storage is referring to a mass quantity of items. So, but I think that's, you know, that, because we have the definitions for outdoor storage, that, that's our, I feel, I feel as addressed. Because, for example, if the, like a landscaping company or something was, wanted to, or nursery, excuse me, if the nursery wanted to display trees, but then they also wanted to sell, you know, 500 trees, they don't necessarily, they would generally put them in a locked storage area, and it, you know, it might be uncovered. But those are separate from this, because from what I'm hearing right now, is like, first we want to address the idea of extending this right to all businesses. So I think, yeah, so I think when we talk about, we would probably have to have a more, I'd have to take a look at the storage definition and make sure that that's explicitly talking about multiple copies of a similar item that's stored.
Only because I can envision someone wanting to store other types of goods, because there's a storage provision.
Right.
That may not relate to.
And I definitely would want to take it out, yeah.
For instance, Leslie?
I don't know, but I just was amazed.
Well, I want to try to get to the heart of your concern, though.
Well, okay, so let's say we were talking about the Christmas tree sales, so vendors, retailer wants to sell Christmas trees, and so the storage, the temporary storage that I would presume would relate to more Christmas trees, they're in, you know, some other part of the lot, so that those can be brought forward and sold. But what if the retailer thinks, oh, storage of goods, why don't I store and using other types of goods that, and, and other types of storage of things that might not relate to that, those temporary sales, but he or she might think, that's provided for, I could store my, I don't know, I can't think of a really good example right now, but that wouldn't relate directly to the, to the products that were being sold temporarily, whether that would create any confusion or problems with long-term storage of inappropriate material or something. That's, that's all I was curious about.
That usually gets to the idea that, why we originally talked about temporary versus stand, doing this all the time, because generally speaking, when someone stores, like, my, my go-to example is pallets, pallets full of whatever, of mulch, or pallets of salt, or pallets of furniture. I don't know why someone wanted to store that, well, outdoor furniture or something. When they store multiple, they store multiple items, and then next to be selling them, when you do, when you do that, when that's their primary form, the form of sales, and that's when, when that's complete, that's done year-round, that has a certain aesthetic impact that we don't necessarily want to have throughout the village, at least, right now, we don't, the way it was written. But when it comes to farm, farm stands, when it comes to Christmas tree sales, that's something that, you know, someone, we can't ask them to take the Christmas trees in and out every day from a building, or the fruit, or, you know, and that kind of thing. So having them, allow them to operate for a finite amount of time, to me, is, is how it's traditionally been done. But I do think, so I think that would stay as its own item, like, allowing someone to temporarily do Christmas tree sales, temporarily do farm stands, still makes sense.
All right, so Mario, Mr. Schneider came to us and said, at his store, Unique Stuff, they have, they have outdoor storage.
Right.
Of items that are, that are too large and cumbersome to move on a daily basis. And he would, I mean, I, Chuck, I hope you don't mind, I'm just going to bring you right into this argument, and I'm not doing this for you, per se, but you are a very handy example to deal with.
I'm handy, I'm here.
And so consequently, I mean, I, he made a very impassioned argument for being allowed to be able to maintain his outdoor storage. And so if, if indeed it is the will of this commission to send a recommendation to the council that creates a facility for him to be able to do this, and I don't mean a building, but I mean a law, or regulation, or a rule, whatever it may be, to me, this is not temporary. And this is not even a time consideration here. He has items in his yard that are just literally too big to move and can't be stored, and so consequently, they're on display on his property. And, you know, personally, I think rightly so. I think he gives this village a real interesting charm, and he's testified that his traffic through his store has been ginormous because of that, because people see it, and they think, that's the coolest thing I've seen in a while, I want to go in that store. My wife and I did that because of what he had outside. Otherwise, I probably wouldn't have gone inside, but I saw that chicken outside, I wanted to go inside that store. So, I mean, you know, if, I think that when we consider storage, if we're, if we're going to go this route, we need to make a provision, not for Chuck, okay, but for a person who wants to conduct business and wants to store things on their property, on display, that are, that the logistics of it alone make it unreasonable to be considered bringing it inside every night, was really what it comes down to. It's either a display, or it's a storage. Now, you accommodate that perhaps, outdoor display doesn't cost anything, outdoor storage, maybe you pay a fee for that, I don't know, I don't have any control over that kind of stuff, I don't know how that goes, hold on, Chuck. You know, because that's an extra advantage that's being granted, so maybe, I mean, Mo, you maybe would speak to that, or maybe I'm totally out of line, and I shouldn't talk about that. But, you know, I, I don't want to dance around the fact here, that, you know, Chuck brought a very sensible request to us, and the council has, has challenged us to find a way to resolve this issue. And so I think that we need to make a provision for that, at least it's something that we should talk about. And I hope that it does go that way, because I think it's appropriate that be able, he'd be able to store things like that on his property. That's my opinion, my opinion. Just me, as a citizen, not necessarily as a chair. So, you know, that's, that's something I would like to, I throw it out there, and I invite comment or discussion about it. And Chuck, I'll let you have the floor in just a minute. Commissioners? Jack?
I believe there's really two or three things, depending on what you want to do. There's outside display, and I'm going to use Berdick Street as an example. They have $100,000 worth of stuff sitting on their lawn for.
10 hours.
10 hours.
10 to 12 hours a day.
They bring it out, he mows the lawn, he parks them there, end of the day, he brings them back in. The reason he brings them back in is security.
Right.
He doesn't want anybody there.
Correct.
Busting them up, smashing them, stealing parts off them.
Yep.
They get them back in. Okay, so that, he's displaying what he has, his wares for sale. Outside storage, to me, is, a guy buys five pallets of windshield washer fluid, and he puts it in front of the gas station and says, 99 cents a gallon. Where's he going to put it, on his roof? Okay, it's his fault he bought it, but do you allow it? It's always been allowed everywhere you go, there's gas stations with hundreds of gallons of washer fluid.
The Sunoco station does it right now.
Outside sales, if you will, is, to me, a fruit stand, a Christmas tree, and even go into your automobiles, I mean, to try to, to keep it there, you don't have a building. You have a building for an office or a sales. Now, to custom-fit what this was brought in front of us for, you are storing things outside, and they are for sale. Now, do you want to encumber the person that has invested in something to sell and, and set rules on how they can store and display that? Outside display and C-1 transitional, I, I don't see anything wrong, personally, with bringing your stuff out and bringing your stuff back in. They do it right on 24. Whether you put both pair of shoes out, or just the lefts, the most steal all the left shoes, you know, they do it for a reason. They bring it back in because it's valuable goods. What we're talking about here, and I'm going to be blunt, is Chuck's got some heavy stuff there.
Mm-hmm.
And it doesn't fit our ordinance, as it is right now. Now, do you want this kind of business in Village of Oxford? And how do we get about it so that we're not picking on this guy and holding them to a standard of one that has a different bill of materials that can't be held? Storage, display, sales. There's three things there that should all be talked about. If you go to automobile or vehicle dealers, and you start reading it, all outside storage of this, that, and the other materials will be enclosed in a decorative wall, enclosed within a decorative wall, not less than six feet high. The lot area shall be hard-surfaced. Do you want hard-surfaced and outside storage and sales? I don't know. I don't know. You know, but to go through and start saying open-air business and all the other things, when we're trying to get down to, can somebody put something out in front of their business without blocking visual traffic, without impeding pedestrian traffic, without causing health, safety, and welfare to the community? Do you want that in the village?
So, so based on this, what I'm hearing, let me ask this, that, from a different angle. Is there anything about outdoor display, storage, or sales of items that you do not want to, that you?
I don't think you can lump them all together, pick one, Mario.
Well, no, of all those three, of all three of them, is there something that you do not want to permit?
There's a lot of things I don't want to permit, so I would suggest you pick one, and we'll start with one. They can't be on the sidewalk.
No, 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 I understand that, but like, because what I'm thinking at, about, generally speaking, I understand the idea of, you know, having large-ticket items that are either expensive or large, massive items that are just, logistically just ridiculous to move all the time. Now, normally, the way this would be addressed is like if someone has those items, and, you know, art pieces and those things, theirs are valuable too. And those can be susceptible to, to kids that want to have this being ridiculous or, you know, people that are just malicious. Normally, a property owner, a business owner, after that happens one time, they're going to want to secure those. And so normally, these, even the large items, they're stored indoors, and they're stored in a, in a different type of business district. They're, they're stored, you're basically talking about Costco. You, you go into Costco, they have 10-foot, 12-foot trees, and they have, they have big items, and they have couches lying out, and then they're displayed right behind there is the items. That's indoors in a warehouse, so that's the main distinction. And cars, even though, even though we talk about cars, it's hard to move around, there are definitely some buildings that have, almost all their cars are stored internal. I mean, we're building some of them right now further south. So, so I was, in terms of the, the business activity that, that we'd want to allow, normally in, or at least, I shouldn't say normally, I should say traditionally, the way it's been done is that we assumed that people would do all, contain all their things inside a building and not put it outside. What, right now, the way I'm thinking is that maybe we just simply have a provision that says, outdoor display yard, and then a person gets to store, display, and sell items in a yard. And that's just a right, and the, right, right now, it sounds like you want them in all the districts.
But don't you have to have setbacks from the sidelines?
You would, I mean, there, obviously, because when it come, when I say outdoor display yard, then it would be something, because my main idea, or, excuse me, the main point I realized I missed when we talked about this originally was, someone, if they did it temporarily, you know, putting this on there in a parking lot, and then suddenly they're taking away all their, their, parking, the available parking for their customers, and then suddenly the, the site is going to be, you know, not only is it going to have more floor area for sale, but it's also going to have more, fewer parking places for people to park if you take that away. So, so right now, I mean, it sounds like, that's why I ask, is there any, obviously, it would not be in the sidewalk. I would say it should not be in parking, required parking spaces, and not in a clear vision zone. But beyond that, is there anything else you, you feel an outdoor display yard shouldn't do?
I think there should be setbacks, especially along residential districts.
Right.
I think, and I guess I'm thinking, there might be height requirements. I can't picture something that would be too tall, but the minute you can't picture it, Chuck's going to buy four. How tall is your rocket? Ah, that's not tall. I'm thinking tall. So I do think there should be requirements, and we've got to come up with those requirements.
But beyond, beyond area and, and setback requirements, is there activity that you would not want to see happen in outdoors, non-enclosed in a building?
I can't, can anyone think of an activity that can't be done outdoors?
Well, I mean.
And I'm sure there's some, but we don't want to list those.
Well, yeah. First off, we don't want to impede an entrepreneur who brings a business to town and can bring business to town and bring people to town to use other businesses in town. So, if, if you're displaying your wares, you don't want a flea market out there, but you want to be able to have a signature piece displayed to sell. You're not going to put all your pieces in the front yard. I mean, if you had 20 pieces, it wouldn't fit in some of these lots. So, I, I keep going back to, let's get rid of this outside display if you bring your stuff in at night. I mean, you can get, you can get rid of a lot of dissemination here amongst businesses if you bring your stuff in at night, right? And I'm going to use Berdick Street again. He's not going to leave that stuff out at night. Lakeland Softener doesn't leave their salt out at night. They don't leave it out, okay? Is it leaving it out at night that's a problem, or is it a problem that people perceive when they drive by and they don't like something?
Well, and I think that's the issue, is like.
Property owners have rights, and property owners and business owners should have the right to display what they're selling. But they don't have the right to leave storing it there in the middle of a residential transitional area all the time. So Suzie Baker and Johnny, they got to look out their front window and see somebody's lawnmower that's for sale, all day and all night.
So, so you, so you are making a distinction between storage and leaving storage? Because I guess when we're talking about storage, you're talking about where something is placed for an extended period of time. So, so then you're talking about storage, you're talking about.
More than 20, if it's up 24 hours, as far as I'm concerned, it's stored.
Right, so are we allowing storage in an outdoor, outdoor yard, outside?
In a separate definition, I think that's the kind of, and there's rear yard, there's front yard, that's what we've got to define, what's allowable.
Right, so, but once again, so you're talking about storage of, you know, multiple items, I mean, what about storage of?
Let's pick on Chuck, Chuck's got all of his stuff out there. I could care less what he's got sitting out. I do feel it's too close to the side lot line, we need to look at this up because it's a residential, I think it needs to be setback. I don't necessarily care what he's got out front. I think, do we want to look at front yard, how much somebody can have, like Chuck or Jack said? Do we want seven tractors in somebody's yard? And that's me personally, I don't have a problem with anything Chuck has outside, it's where he has it.
And I think this is the, the crux of the problem we're coming up with, because when it comes to storage, you know, we're, I think most of us in our mind understand, you know, the storage of pallets of, well, but, but Chuck, you can go back to you, you said you didn't want storage of things, but then you're saying in gas stations, you, storage of the pallets of washer fluid, you're okay with. So how does that, any distinction from someone that has storage of mulch in their, in their, in the front of their hardware store?
We, in the township, there's temporary outdoor sales.
Right.
Okay, you get permitted to sell mulch. A particular person in town, in, in the township would, every year, bring a whole trailer load of mulch and sell it. He'd get violated, he'd come in, he'd pull a temporary sales permit to sell his mulch, his mulch would disappear. He confide, complied with the ordinance, got his permit, sold his mulch.
And so, so he did it for temporary, meaning for a finite amount of time?
Yeah.
So that's where this ordinance is, that's what, that's outdoor display sales temporary, fit under that definition and that right there.
Well, how long is temporary then? But see, now, we also have tractor supply. Tractor supply has a special land use, allowing storage and outdoor sales. Meaning they can pile up bundles of sawdust for horse barns. And they don't bring them in every night, but when somebody comes there, they pick the bundle up, throw them in their truck, and then they go. You can drive by the right now, see, things that don't get stolen, things that get stolen are chained up, but they have a permit for special land use for outdoor sales and outdoor storage.
Then that might be the way to go in terms of, yeah, in terms of temporary versus permanent. Because, because in, because in this case, rather than having a permit, a temporary license where someone has to redo it, we can just say outdoor display sales permanent, it's a special land use, but then because it's a special land use, they would come once the planning commission, they, they identify what they're doing, they'd identify their yard, where it's located, they'd identify what the materials were going to be, and then as long as we know they're not storing pallets of material, then, then, then they could just get their approval and then they, they just have it.
And just because he has an outdoor sales and storage special land use does not mean he can dump 100 yards of mulch in the spring and start selling it and leaving it out of his front yard.
Correct.
There are limitations that you can't do this if you bring it out here and saw, here's what you're going to do. Neatly ordered, the wording, I don't have all of it, neatly ordered, stacked, cleaned up, no ripped bags, all that kind of things.
No, yeah, that's true, so it'd be there.
Chuck, take the podium if you will, please.
No.
Tell us where you're from.
State your name and your address and state your business there, young man.
Okay, Chuck Snyder, 26th Avenue Road in Park, Business is Unique Stuff, also owns Spandale. My solution to this dilemma is that you don't go down the storage road. That you basically allow people to take their stuff in at night, and some people, you know, they could leave it out at night. It's got to be for sale, it's got to have a price on it. So, I think storage just opens up a whole can of worms. Leslie was sort of trying to articulate that idea, but, you know, it's tough to come up with examples sometimes, but the reality is, you don't want people storing pallets of stuff. You know, even the gas station guy, he can only put so much stuff between the gas pumps, because that's where he's got to put it. And the gas station guy is not going to bring 52 bottles of, with the washer fluid, in his business every night, it ain't happening. So, my suggestion is that you have open-air businesses, which we've had for a bazillion years. Not really see why we need to even be talking about that. It's very seldom used, it's going to be fireworks, Christmas trees, farmer's market, that's it. We haven't had a farmer's market for four or five years. So, I don't think you need to spend a whole lot of time on that because I don't think there's a lot of requests for that. And typically, it's a temporary permit for six months, they pay $500, and done. And we have a lot of stuff in here about the size of the building and, you know, some, they, they don't have a building, so this commentary is not even appropriate. So then there's basically two people, there's people like myself who, I can't, I don't, where am I going to take it into? I've got no place to take this stuff. It's, it's out there because there is no place to put it.
Because he brought it.
And then there's people like Berdick Street, where they got to bring this stuff in, it's just too expensive to leave outside, just, you know, bind it, whatever. In our case, we encourage people to come and shop when we're not open. They can, it's summer time, it's 9 o'clock at night, come on in, take a look at what we got, that's why it's outside for them to look. A lady just called me the other day, two days ago, I don't buy, and I said, that chicken, how much is that chicken? Well, when you look at really what we have, and we got a little driveway there, what is that? We'll just say it's 15 feet. Visually, you're seeing 15 feet of stuff there, that's all you're seeing, you can't see behind the stuff. There's other stuff there, but it's not visible to the road, you're only seeing what we show them, we show them a rocket, we show them a chicken, and a couple other things, that's it, that's all they see. So, bottom line is, I'm suggesting that you don't worry about storage, that storage shouldn't be part of the equation. You have two categories, people who want to bring stuff inside and people who want to leave it outside. We're not storing it outside, we're just displaying it outside, it's for sale, it's got a price tag on it. And as far as residential, I've been in business for May, May's, last May, June, July, August, September, October, November, seven months. I don't think there's been one major that's complained, ever there's seven months.
All right, thank you, Chuck. Commissioners, Jack?
I don't want to get into a heated argument, but you're storing stuff outside. You're storing stuff outside. You're here because you violated the ordinance. The ordinance we're trying to change is trying to make it work for you, so we have to address storage. If you change storage or you don't change storage, you will impact current or future businesses. I'm reading this thing going, you're right, we haven't had a farmer's market in four years, what are we doing? Let's look at what you want in the village for transitional. Do you want to bring people here that set their loads of bread outside in front of the bakery? We don't, we don't have one. Do you want to set the lumberyard people out in the front yard with their two-by-four? Oh, we don't have one. You know, all these things you don't have, you're getting new kinds of businesses here. Somebody didn't like what was being done and it was violating the storage of stuff on his property. When that came up, it was violating somebody else's putting stuff outside to display it. What are we trying to correct? Maureen, please help me. What are we trying to correct? We're storing stuff outside and we're displaying stuff outside.
I'm going to need a drink really soon, Jack.
Me too.
I just want to say, I think we need to focus on one thing.
Which one is it?
I don't even care, but if we're going to do outdoor storage, let's pick Chuck's property. How close can, can Chuck have outdoor storage? First question, can he have outdoor storage? Let's say we all decide yes. If so, where can he have it? Can he have it in the front yard? Can he have it in the backyard, side yard? Okay, did we decide that? Does it have to be lit? Did we decide that?
That's each question.
Now let's move on. Let's take a look at the memo that we got from Joe Mador, because I think that answered a lot of questions. And I think we're just, we're so getting off topic.
So let's take storage.
Okay, let's take storage.
Okay.
Do we want to allow outdoor storage at all in the C1 transition district? Not going to hold anybody to it, but let's do it with a show of hands. Anybody? I'd like to allow outdoor storage in the C1 district in the proper place.
C1 transitional?
C1 transitional.
Yeah, with definitions.
With rules, yes.
Okay.
We're not going to let Chuck just go crazy, throw Legos everywhere.
So we've got the topic of storage and we're going to allow outdoor storage. How close to the side yards?
Does the PC want to allow outdoor display in C1 transitional district? Do you want to allow outside display in C1 transitional district? This is Joe. If yes, what is the procedure to apply for initial permit? Okay, does Berdick Street, does Chuck, does Lakeland want to display things in their front yard for sale? What should an approved timeframe be for an initial permit? If the PC permits the original permit, what about subsequent permits? You know, we're permitting this stuff, we're permitting people out of business.
Well, and I think, Chuck, I mean, I think this question was answered because you mentioned display sales. And so, display sales that are, that are placed out and brought in, that we want to allow that for businesses, as a property, as a business owner, right?
You allow it in the village core. The saddle shop can wheel out a rack of clothes, we allow it.
Are you asking if we want to allow it? Are you asking for a show of hands?
Yeah.
To allow outdoor display in the C1 transition district? Is that your question?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
That's easy.
Okay, we answered the question, number one. Number two, how much area can be used for outside display?
That wasn't the next question, I thought we were on permit.
Now, I'm not going through all the, the other ones, we already knew, if we can get through the questions, yes, yes, yes.
Okay.
Then we'll go back to the finite ones.
All right, let's go, what's the next question?
We said yes. How much area can be used for out, outside display items on a property? Should it be based on the size of the building, the size of the property, limited to a percentage of coverage of the outside area? Example number one, if I have a business that's 12,000 square feet on one acre of property, I'm supposed to. I'm supposed to not cover it more than 30% for parking. If 30% is parking, 50% is building, that's 20%.
But isn't, okay, but they're, they're have sidewalks. They don't have parking in front.
I know. They got parking, they got to park somewhere. Berdick Street's got parking front. Lakeland's got parking.
I don't even understand what you guys, what is the question again, Jack?
How much area can be used for outside display items on a property?
I'd say 15% of their front yard.
Now, what if a guy's got a 50-foot lot?
Well, then good for them.
Thank you, Mo. Thank you.
If you want to make a front yard, buy a 100-foot piece of property.
Thank you very much. If you want to sell a rocket ship that's 14-foot tall, it don't fit. You know what I'm saying? You're picking the size of the property. Okay, so you want to limit it to the, based on the size of the property you're building? Property?
I said 50% of the front yard.
50?
15, 1/5.
Oh, that's too small.
But in number two as proposed, it actually gives an option based on which is smaller.
Should the?
It isn't either building size or property size. It's defined with whichever is smaller.
So if the building is smaller than the lot, you would allow them less display?
The way, the way it's currently proposed, it's either...
Unless I'm reading Joe's email.
Right.
It's either, if you have a one-acre lot, you can either have 25% of the lot or 50% of the net floor area of the building. Whichever of those is smaller. So typically, 50% of the floor of the building would be smaller. So I guess that's a good point, that 25% of the lot.
2,000 square foot, you can have 1,000 square foot of storage if you've got an acre of property.
What's an acre?
43,500.
43,000, 160.
I'm trying to help you answer your questions. What do you want to base it on? The size of the building or the property size? Or do you want to say a caveat, one is smaller than the other? I hate to, I'm just trying to, I'm with Maureen. I want to get this done.
How about 30% of the net property area?
But I don't think, in my personal opinion, it shouldn't be more square footage than the building. If you have a tiny building and a whole lot of land, you can just, I'm not sure you just get more outside than you have inside.
Yes.
Right.
So you have 30% of the net property area or the size of the building, whichever is less? You follow me?
I do.
So you've got, you've got 10,000 square feet of property and 2,000 square foot building.
The building is smaller.
So you've got net, you've got net area of 8,000 feet, 8,000 square feet. Half of that is 4,000 and the building is two, so it's 2,000 square feet.
No.
It's the smaller of the two.
You mixed it up. The smaller of the two. If you got 10,000, you got a 2,000 square foot building.
You've got 8,000.
You're getting half, you're getting half of the 2,000. 1,000 square feet.
1,000 square feet.
Well, that's pretty small.
What you're proposing is you're saying...
I'm saying...
The net.
The net.
That's where I was talking about the parking lot.
Right.
It's regulated by a percentage.
Well, I'm just saying net in terms of building.
Building.
In terms of building, not, and, because you already said the parking lot's going to be 30%, right?
Well, I pulled that number out because there is a number that we equate to what your parking is going to be more or less than.
Okay. Well, actually, it doesn't really work that way because what it is, is the parking requirement is based on the square footage of the building. And so then, they, the property owner has to make sure they can fit the required parking spaces and the square footage they want. So typically, they have to play with those barometers to get it down. I think one thing that probably is, and I was hoping that your ordinance would have it, but it doesn't. I think one thing when it comes to the actual size of an outdoor display area, if we're talking about just the activity, whether it's indoor or outdoor, the combination of it. The combination of how much area is used for sales, we usually limit that to a percentage of a lot. So maybe if, it doesn't, rather than worry about the, the, the building itself, if the combination of someone's building and outdoor lot area and outdoor displaced yard can't be more than, maybe what, 35, 30% of the lot? 40% of the lot? So that way, if they want, if they choose to have a small building and then display their items outside, that's one thing. If they want to have a bigger building and then just display some of their items outside, whatever combination, because that gives the property owner the opportunity to say, this is how I want to run my business.
That seems reasonable.
I'm going to have my, my, my operations and my desk inside to do the sales.
Right.
You know, write things up and then I'm just going to be outside and selling things. Or they're going to be like, I got to keep most of these things inside. But there are a few big ticket, big, big, large, massive items I want outside on a small, you know.
Also, also though, I just want to follow up on Mo's comment about trying to restrict what's out in front to a percentage. Not that I have, that might not apply to this particular number. It might better be addressed under setback or something. But I think that's, you know, maybe you should speak to it.
Can I pick on you, Chuck? How wide is your piece of property? It's 47 North Washington. It's 100 wide? And it's, it's how far off 24, the building, the porch?
15 feet.
So you've got 1,500.
That's from the sidewalk.
Right.
Where's?
So you have 1,500 square feet of front yard. Times 15%.
Well, that's not really true because that's only where the house is. Then I got, the pot goes off, and so...
But your front yard is the portion in front of the house. So if we allowed 15% of your front yard...
That's not, that's not going to do it.
You're getting 225 square feet.
Say the house is...
Yeah.
That's 25?
Let's say the house is 25 feet. Let's just say 30. 30 feet by 15 is, that's 4...
45.
Square feet. Can you give me how much of that?
If it's 100 wide...
No, the house isn't 100 wide.
The property is 100 wide. So you've got 100 feet by 15 feet. That's 1,500 square feet of front yard. Times 15 feet, that's 225 square feet of front yard outdoor display that you would get.
15% you mean, Mo.
Isn't that what I said?
No, that's what you meant.
15%, yes.
Yes.
Don't you think 225 is a lot? Don't you think that's a lot?
That's 10 by 20.
10 by 20.
10 by 20, it's like a small...
Okay, how much stuff do you want in the front yard?
I know, that's...
Let me put it in perspective. 10 by 20 is a one-car garage.
Right.
But that's just the front yard, Chuck. That's what we're, in the front yard.
That's the displaying nature. That's the character of a display.
Display in the front yard.
Well, this is what's happening. We're mixing oranges and apples and coming up with this fruit salad. If you're not displaying anything in the front yard, you're storing something in the backyard that's outside. We have another guy that stores and brings it in. We have another guy that stores and leaves it out. We have, you're trying to, we're trying to make so many things out of oranges, apples and bananas.
But shouldn't we have?
Let's get to one of them, pick one and work on it.
But shouldn't we indicate? Because he may not be there all the time and maybe somebody else coming in wants to have something out front.
Looking for the guy that comes to start selling barn wood and he lays out 30 beams across the front of his yard. He's not obstructing vision. He's going to be looking at this all the time because he's not taking it in and out. He's going to be sawing pieces off that people buy by the linear foot. You're going to have people selling anything in their front yard in transition, C1 Transitional, that may be out there all the time. So if you're trying to develop things that are sitting in the front yard, day and night, 24 hours a day, that's different than...
Well, Jack, and of course, you can always say that there'll be no front yard display or storage.
You could say that, but I don't think it's advantageous to bring in businesses to your village.
And so that leads to the question, the type of businesses you want to have. So you're right, Jack. That's the way, if you want to open it up. And I'll offer entrepreneurial ideas, as you mentioned. I'm sorry.
Want a water?
You do open it up.
Or 27 cock drops. I have whatever you need.
I actually have one too. So maybe, I think, I do think...
We're taking...
There's a lot, I do think there's, there are, we're kind of opening up, as you said, every kind of fruit imaginable.
Yes.
So it seems like, that to me, leads to the idea that each, each person, each applicant, if they want to do this on a permanent basis, needs to do, come in for a special use permit. Because with the special use permit, that's when you look at each situation and you look at what, what you can feel is appropriate. Because for example, I do, well, number one, I still think, and correct me if I'm wrong, I still think we're all, if we're all on board with the idea of an existing business owner in the C1 and possibly C2 should have the ability to do an outdoor display where they put things out and they take things in every day. Like if they want to do that, they should be allowed to do that, not just in downtown.
End of story.
And end of story. So that's one thing. So that's one thing. Is that, am I correct?
Yes.
You agree with us?
I agree with that.
Yes.
Rose?
Yeah.
I'm good with that.
All right. So that's, I think, and I think that's a good one because it expands that.
Display is not really the issue, though, and it hasn't been. It's something that needs to be addressed.
It is the issue because it was drug up in front of us with this fruit salad.
I get it. I get it. And so it's something that's relatively straightforward and easy to resolve.
Get rid of this, we can get rid of the bananas.
We can agree to it. Now, the issue is, how do you deal with somebody who wants to do outside storage?
Right. And I do think...
And I like, I got to tell you, I like the idea of having it be a special use permit, Mario, because then that addresses what Jack's concern is. If you allow outdoor storage, you're going to get somebody selling barn wood in the front yard.
Picnic tables, swings.
Whatever it may be, you know, and the problem is, if we create an ordinance to allow outdoor storage, we won't have any control over what goes in.
Correct.
Anybody who wants to come and do business and store picnic tables in the front yard is going to be able to do it. Do you want to have picnic tables in the front yard?
Exactly.
Or whatever it may be, you know? The problem is, there's no control over it. I would much rather have somebody who wants to do outdoor storage come before us and say, here's my plan. This is what I want to do. And we should have a set of guidelines for that business owner that says, this is kind of what we expect, just in terms of the logistics of it, okay? And we can come up with some nifty calculation. You gave us a really good example of a, of a calculation that you could make for a reasonable amount of space set aside for that type of activity. And just say in the ordinance, you know, we have this available. Here's the guidelines. Put together a plan, bring it before the PC and we'll let you know what we think.
Right.
And if you present a reasonable opportunity to us that enhances the things about the village that we all know we want and give us the opportunity to say no to things that we think would be a detriment or an eyesore, then I think that, I think we're done. Anybody agree, disagree?
I agree. I think that that allows the commission to take a look at each individual situation. And also, by discussing it in public, we have the opportunity of the public to come and voice their concerns, if they have any, or their support, if they have support. So we have everyone weighing in on it. And that way, we don't have to compare apples to oranges. We're not put in that situation. But I do think the guidelines are important because not only do we need them, but I agree that they need to be available to potential business owners so they have an idea of what might be workable.
Can that go in?
So if I may, when it comes to those guidelines, I think there's two approaches to it. One, we can go, kind of go with where this original proposal was going and be a little bit more specific with dimensions. So when you do something like that, it kind of makes the decisions, takes a little bit of the decisions out of the hands of this commission and then future commissions. Because in the future commissions, you're telling them, we feel X percent and X tall and Z wide and this is what we're comfortable with. The other alternative, and we can do that. Because I, because, because I would fall back on the idea that, you know, this is, what basically I'm talking about is retail, excuse me, talking about commercial activity and the percentage of commercial activity on a lot. And I think that's one way to go, if we went with the very specific, with the more specific route. The other route would be where we would have, like similar to your other special land use regulations, you would write them a little bit more broadly. So that way, each applicant has the opportunity to present their case. And then each commission, both this commission and the commissions in the future, have the ability to interpret what they feel is appropriate. Here's an example.
Yeah.
The language could say, the outdoor display, sales and storage of items shall not negatively impact adjacent residents. That's all I would say. And then the planner would write a letter and they would, they would make a recommendation. The applicant would, would say, I don't think this is going to negatively impact because of blah, blah, blah. And then the planning commission gets to make that determination as to whether something negatively impacts the adjacent residents.
Okay.
That's, so those are your two different approaches. So we could go, and so I'm curious as to what, if, what you'd prefer.
Now, I know we've talked about this before and I seem to recall, or previous discussion about this. Special land use permits are usually attached to a piece of property. Is that correct?
Yes, that's usually correct.
And I seem to recall also that we have the ability to attach a special land use permit to some other entity aside from the property.
Yes.
I'm going to have to definitely talk to the village attorney about this because it's my inclination that that's been done in the past in other communities. So I definitely think it's an alternative that you can have as a tool in your tool belt to, but I just want to know, I want to make sure that I give you the right way to implement it. For example, you could grant a special land use approval to Harry's, Harry's Trees and you can, the special land, you can, one of the conditions could be this, if the business owner, Harry, leaves the business, the special land use permit will be expired.
Yes.
Yep.
So I believe that's an option. I just want to make sure that that is an option.
If that's an option. That would be my preference, Mario, speaking for myself. Because I don't want, I don't want Harry to retire and have Steve come in and set up picnic tables.
Correct.
Because there's a special land use permit attached to the property.
Yeah.
Or stack up used tires.
Yep.
You know?
Mm-hmm.
And so I would really like to see that the, that the special land use permit, at the very least, is assigned to the specific business and/or proprietor. But specific business kind of makes sense to me. As long as it stays that business. Harry could retire and his son Edward could take it over and it's still Harry's, whatever it is, you know, but it's still the same business. Go ahead, Jack.
Well, the flavor of the new village council for a permit versus special land use, is it still requiring, requesting a permit for outside sales?
You realize the new village councils had one meeting and the newest people weren't there.
All out yet?
So I have no feel for the new council.
Okay, that's my question. Because what's happening is, I don't want to go tell you in C1 Transitional, you need a special land use.
I don't...
If you want to permit something in C1 Transitional and you permit it and you come here and pay a permit to sell it, that's one way of really quickly telling them you're out of business.
I think the current council will definitely take to heart what the planning commission suggests.
Okay.
And I don't see, out of the other two new members, I've never heard anything that would make me think otherwise. My biggest problem with special uses is Chuck, I don't really like Chuck.
You have to word them correctly because we have three in our township right now and I know you have several here that are tied to buildings and properties. We have three that are tied to businesses. If that business goes out, that special land use goes away.
That's correct.
Berdick Street sign is non-conforming, but it's granted by a special land use from James Lumber.
A thousand years ago.
Yeah. So what I'm saying is, you're right, we're all right here talking about it, but the previous council told us to consider per... council told us to consider permitting.
Right.
So Chuck's got something to say.
Chuck, go ahead, please. Return to the podium. Be brief, please.
I'm looking at Joe's message here.
Fortunately, I hope that I got a real good memory. The whole concept of permit was, when I came here originally, and said, we don't want to have a special land use, because we don't know what we're committing to, and it goes with the land. And so, I suggested to you, that it be a permit. That the permit was, had some link to it.
Yep.
And that gave the administrative aspect of the village to evaluate whether they were performing properly under the permit, to see if they were gonna renew it. I thought we went all, this, this whole deal we did like, weeks ago, that we weren't gonna do special land use, it was gonna be a permit, because it gave us more control over the business. Because maybe, I got it today, but tomorrow somebody else has it, and that somebody else isn't on the same page, so he's gotta be reamed in. And say, hey, if you want to continue to get a permit, buddy, you gotta do this. No, this is Tom's hardware, revisit it. Crap all over the place.
Oh, yeah.
So, I thought we were already down this road, where we were doing permits, we were not doing special.
Yeah, we did, we did talk about that. It's not, it's not.
I think somebody just misspoke, and said use instead of permit. But my concern with not having some concrete, and not letting it be a sitar, is, no, that's somebody we don't like, we're not gonna let. And unfortunately, I've seen it happen before in the village of Oxford. We really like Gary Douglas. He says on the planning commission, let's go and let, let's go and let, a lot, we won't let him have a nude barn in his house, we don't care. But Leslie, she's really kind of new, we're not gonna have it at that end of the day.
I sent a letter to Chuck Snyder, but nobody else.
You know what, Chuck, you just sit there, take the podium when you're called on, you won't be calling again, Gary.
The letter was me.
Let's get through this. Where are we at? What's on that, what's, what's the question we're on?
What you're proposing are that guidelines be more specific, at this point, that's what you're saying.
I prefer some specificity, if that's a word, than just not, because I think it can be abused. Think, that's the word.
So, so, first let's answer that question. If, how does the other commissioners feel, whether it be specificity, or more guidelines, more broad guidelines?
Well, it makes some sense that there may be areas that can be more broadly interpreted, and that can be left a little less, less specific, and areas that need to be more specific. I mean, if we're trying to apply the same set of general goals, I think there might be a way to convey that, so that it's not too wide open. But I do think it's always gonna be interpreted, and, and anytime a decision is gonna be made. I don't think you can prevent bias, but I do think it's a concern. I, I do.
It is what it is.
Yes. Boy, I believe we need outdoor display. That's what I believe, first and foremost. In good taste for this village.
We are not the taste police, so I don't even want to hear that comment.
Okay, I'll back up. Do you want 45 tires lined up out here, in front of 57 Washington?
Well, no, but if it's a tire place, and they want to display them, and we just let displays, I don't know, we can stop them. I don't get to pick what you sell. It, if we're gonna let outdoor sales happen.
Let me back up.
Then the person who sells tires has just as much a right as the person who sells rockets.
Let me back up and get on the same bus as you. If we allow outside display of the materials that are sold within the building, it, should it be permitted, and how much, and how much do we need to protect the neighbors? In C1 transitional.
Are we talking storage or display?
Display.
Display. I think, I would like to, my personal opinion, I'd like to allow, allow outdoor storage. I'd like to allow it to be 15% of the front yard.
Okay. One of Joe's questions is.
In the C1 transitional district.
One of Joe's questions is, does the PC want to allow items displayed outside, to be left out overnight?
Well, I think we already just said, that's what outdoor storage is.
I'm talking display, like we are.
Well, I don't want to do it under display, I'd like to do that under storage.
Okay. Under storage, if you're putting it outside, it's storage and display.
So, we're allowing it under display, we're not allowing it under storage, unless we're gonna have that in another, it's not the same. It can either be stored, or it can be displayed.
Thank you. Thank you. I agree with you.
It, it can't be both. If, without 24 hours of storage. Chuck, your rocket's a storage. It is what it is. I'm gonna allow it, but it is what it is.
We're not arguing.
So you, so you would allow the storage of that, but would you allow the, allow the storage of 100 tires, if each individual one was marked, with a price tag?
You know what, I absolutely would.
Okay.
I might not like it.
Right.
But I don't like a lot of things. And I think we would allow it, in 225 square feet, how many tires can you get in 225 square feet?
How tall?
Well, that's a whole nother thing.
Four, four TV.
I get those bitches to the moon.
What about picnic tables?
Yeah.
It doesn't, to me, it cannot matter what it is. If we allow that use in the C1 transitional district, and I'm not sure we do tires, but we might.
Yeah, and I use that just right.
Then we should allow the outdoor display of the material.
Okay, so if you're gonna permit it, then, how, are you, are you, you're not, if you permit it, you're not gonna have any constraint at all.
Sure you can.
Upon what kind of.
Chuck's gonna come, he's gonna apply for a permit.
Of what, how?
The ordinance enforcement officer could say, you're not in compliance with your permit.
Well, but he is.
Well, he's not, if it's wrong.
Okay, so you, you, instead of having a land use, you have a permit. All he has to do is come in, and fill out an application with Joe, and give him a check, and he's got his permit.
The first one he comes to the.
And.
Planning commission. The first one Chuck comes to the planning commission, and says, I want this permit.
To get a permit?
To get a permit.
To get a permit.
A special use permit.
He calls it right out in his email.
And we look at it, he fills out the application, we look at it, we say, bless you Chuck, go store.
All right.
So he goes for six months.
All right, all right. You said something different.
The renewal goes to the ministry.
Because, I get it. It's a special use permit.
Right.
It's not a special land use.
Right.
Right.
I got it, okay. Now I'm, now I'm on the bus, thank you.
And my personal opinion is, after six months, and/or January 1st, whichever comes first, he goes to the village.
Okay, make it so.
And he gets it renewed.
I'm good with this.
And it's renewed every January 1st, until Chuck screws up, and then he's gotta come back to the planning commission, because he screwed up, and used 300 square feet, instead of 225 square feet.
And he never mowed around it, or he didn't do something?
Right.
And he's violating it, we don't reissue the permit?
Well, you go.
Administration.
You could have the zoning enforcement guy send them up there.
See, that's what I just said to you.
Yeah.
And then he comes back to the planning commission.
All right, I'm, I'm totally down with that.
And we spank him, and we say, don't do it anymore. We say, okay, you, you comply, go do what you will.
Okay. I'm good with that. Write it up, Mario.
It's written up, as was in front of you. Honestly, I, I, honestly, this is what, that's, that.
I don't like this, because I don't think you're using the right words.
So, we should write it up, as we want it.
Number one, we have to check the state statute, because special use, I believe, is in the planning enabling, the zoning enabling act.
Yes.
As a specific definition. So I don't know if we can have a special use permit, separate from our special land use.
Call it Mo's.
Yeah, but, we have it, I have.
Finkerbell use.
I have a temporary use permit. Right, in the ordinance in front of you, it's defined as a temporary use permit. So it's a temporary use of outdoor display, or even outdoor storage, of outdoor storage.
This is not temporary, though. What we're talking about is not temporary.
They were just talking about that, it's, it's for six months.
Well, the permit's temporary.
Right.
Right.
But the use is not temporary. As long, so you gotta make sure you put temporary on the right.
If you sold all his stuff tomorrow, though, you'd be five months out of a permit.
Yeah, that's true.
He'd be happy, boy. All right, somewhere here, all right. Okay, first and foremost, when we meet again, because I don't think we're gonna get this finalized tonight.
No.
Here's what I would like. I would like to have one document like this, which is our current, without any editing on it. And one document like this, which is our proposed changes, without any red lines, or strike-throughs. Because this unfortunately is very, is very hard to comprehend, when it's all marked up like this. So if possible, I would just like to say, okay, here's where we are right now, and here's where we propose to take it. At least. Okay, so then, I would like to consider the option of having a temporary use permit. And the, the proprietor would have to come before the commission, with a request, and state his or her case, and spell out exactly what the plan is. We would have a set of guidelines available for that, so that they would know sort of where we're leaning, and where to go. So they would know that they, public safety has to be first and foremost, fire has to be protected, line of sight has to be obliged, consideration to property, or neighboring property should be obliged, in some regards, whether it be a setback of something. You know, a lot of it's gonna depend upon the logistics, you know? The, the house is 15 feet from the property line, what are you gonna have, a 15-foot, or are you gonna have a 10-foot setback, that gives you a 5-foot space to store stuff? I, I don't know. I'm, I'm not sure how to do that, that's.
I don't care how much space Chuck has left. I want my setback, and he can have whatever, if it's 5 feet or 50, that's up to him, he bought the property. But we need X amount from that residential district, and we've got to bump at that number. And vote with the guy who bought two small pieces of property.
That may be one of the specifics to look at, is the setbacks.
And would also give guidance to future land purchasers, knowing that they sell a 50-foot widget, and he's got a 60-foot, or 55-foot lot, he can't meet the 5-foot setbacks from each side, so.
Forgive me, but I, but I do feel that this ordinance does what you're directing me to do right now. Because it is for some person to apply for a temporary use permit, coming from. And so that's why I thought Joe's questions were very good. Because, for example, my first question would be, we being allowed in the C1 transition? Right now, it's a temporary use in C1 and C2. Do we want it just in C1 transition, or C1 transition and C2?
I.
I, I'll be honest, I haven't even thought about C2.
I haven't either, and I don't, from the hip, I would say, no, you don't want to touch C2.
Okay, it's already allowed in C2.
Yeah, that's why I say you don't want to go.
That's why I can't even think, I only focus on C1 transition.
I haven't thought about it, but I don't want to touch it.
Bishop, head, a, sorry, I don't have any crap in my purse right there.
Oh, yeah.
Technically, it's not in the ordinance.
C2.
Technically, it's not in the ordinance.
But I think we're just looking at the transition.
Okay, so then, yeah, so that answers question one, it's just C1 transition, is what we're talking about. If yes, so we are allowing in C1, is pretty easy to find an initial permit. What should an approved timeframe for an initial permit be? Right now, I'm saying six months. And then, after six months, they have to come back and talk to the administration. You want six months, you want more, you want less?
I would, for administrative, I would like to see it be.
The initial permit, the initial.
Right. I would like to see it be six months, or January 1st, whichever's last, and then get it on a calendar cycle, so that they know when all of these expire. So that they're going, oh, it's May 24th, I think Chuck's special permit's coming up. Get it on a calendar year.
Okay, is that what we want?
That sounds good to me.
Yeah.
Okay. So, six months, what did it, but.
Or January 1st, whichever's last, and then it goes on a calendar year.
Whichever, or.
I come here tomorrow and ask for a special.
So if someone, so if someone applies in April?
Tomorrow.
Then it's six months.
Someone, yeah, so then six months, and then they have to come back, and then, so the April major. So they come back in September, and then in September, because that's six months after April.
Right, so then they go to the council, the, the village manager, September 1st.
Right, and then.
And they go back on January 1st.
Okay.
For 12 months.
Annual cycle.
And then it becomes an annual cycle.
Right. Okay. Yep, no, okay, I get it.
Is that what everybody's thinking? Mm-hmm.
So you're gonna let him go for a year?
They apply on April 1st, to the planning commission. We're gonna give them six months, so they go September 1st to the village manager, they come back to the village manager January 1st. That's eight months.
So.
And then the cycle starts. And then the cycle goes for a year.
When he comes in January, he's good for a year?
Till, till December, yes, till the next January.
So he's good a year?
Right.
Your initial one is six months.
Because it's a probationary period.
Probationary period.
Then you're a year.
Then, after that year.
Then you're after that year, a year.
But you still got a quote, in case the guy strays.
Once you stray, I think you're booted back to the planning commission for a spanking.
All right. So that answers the second question. If the permit is original permit, what about subsequent permits? This is January 1st. So their subsequent permits are January 1st, okay? So then, will subsequent permit be allowed to be renewed by the administration, or back to the PC? Right now, it goes to the administration, but if the village manager wants, he can kick it back to the PC.
I'm good with that.
I'm good with the, with the manager. How about you, Mo?
Well, let Joe have a shot, that's good.
And then, and then, question four, what is the timeframe for renewed permits? We just said it, 12 months.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
All right, so then, how much area can be used for the, for the display and the property?
What was your suggestion, Mario?
My original suggestion was, not more than 50% of the floor area that exists in the building, or not more than 25% of the lot. That, that kind of doesn't work out, because it'll always gonna be, it's always gonna be less than 50% of the lot. I would say, a combination of indoor and outdoor just, retail space should not be more than 30% of the lot.
Oh, no, I don't like that.
Not too much?
Not enough.
Thirty, like.
You said indoor and outdoor.
Right, so if they have an acre lot...
Then we get a third of a la, a third of an acre for storage?
Or an acre for disparate, like, indoor, two people got acre lots here, so...
Yeah, there's not a lot of acre lots.
So then 30% isn't enough, so 40%? So a half, like, you want half the lot dedicated to retail sales?
I'm going to pick on Chuck again because he knows the size of his property. So you've got a house, how big, just roughly, how big's the house?
I would say, uh, 500 square feet.
Okay.
The footprint or they sit into...
The footprint.
One floor, we're talking 1,500.
I was going to say...
Okay, so now...
Do you think it's 50 by 100?
What?
Yeah, the building.
That's 5,000.
That's 5,000.
Right. Okay.
30 by 15.
30 by 15, that's about right.
Yeah, that's about right.
I didn't like the outdoor display area shall not exceed one square foot of ground surface for each two square feet of frontage of the building.
So 30 square feet, now we're down to 15 feet.
Thank you. That's, I mean, my note says that right here.
And, and where is that? Where, do you see that, Ken?
That's, uh, item C.
C.
On page one.
Yeah, that's stroked, that's stricken out.
Oh, I'm not.
No, in the second paragraph.
Outdoor display sales temporary C.
Section 4123.
Open-air businesses.
Paragraph C, oh.
Yep, outdoor display.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. That's, that's your existing language.
Yeah, well, that's like...
But that's open-air business, not can't have it. I mean, what do you do?
I, I personally think that we can't, that we have to look different from the front and the side setbacks. Like, because I don't want him to put all that stuff in the front yard. I think the front yard has to be a specific size and I really like the 225 square feet that I came up with for Chuck. I can't believe that actually worked. I don't care how much he stuffs in the side, as long as I get my setback.
So, so, so you're, you're saying is that as long as we get to that next point about the setbacks, then if he uses 50% of his lot for the rest of the, I mean, the total of 50% for, for retail sales, then you're okay?
As long as he meets his side and rear yard setbacks, the front, the front yard is the only one I'm even interested in curtailing.
So, so a total of indoor and outdoor side area of 50% of the lot?
If that works.
He's got a 1,500 square foot building and he's got how much of a lot? He's allowed so much to have storage or sales.
And provide the parking.
And to provide the parking and provide the setbacks from the neighbors.
Ain't happening, but...
I understand.
The envelope's getting smaller.
Now you got...
Right, that's what I'm looking at, is the envelope. And that's why, when it comes to area, typically in a commercial lot, you end up with 30, well, typically, commercial lot coverage is 30%. But that's also because you normally have some green space, some, some breathable air in addition to that. So increasing it to...
30% of the lot?
30% of the lot.
Typically, lot coverage is 40%.
It can be in certain areas, right. But, and then in downtowns, and actually, that's a good point, in downtowns, it actually is more. But we're also having to figure in for parking. So maybe 40%. Probably a combination of indoor/outdoor sales shall not be greater than 40% of the lot.
I'm good with that.
I'm good with that.
That, that is, that's a lot easier, it's just 40%.
Okay, good.
Yep.
Item five, under five there on page three, Mario goes on to say that "The display area shall not be located in any required front yard or side street yard."
Right, as far as is now, so we can change that.
Okay, so that's, that item, item, uh, item five is going away, is that correct?
Uh, we can, yeah, that's what we want.
Well, because Mo is determined to allow somebody to put this stuff in the front yard.
I'm determined.
And the side yard, as long as some type of setback is considered, I guess.
So, so this is worded a little, you have to... Because it says required front yard or side street yard? So the required yard is, is that, is just that first 15?
Oh, it's required that's key there, huh?
Yeah, required front yard.
Okay.
So you have to hit, uh, this area.
Oh, I see, so that's space set aside. Sidewalk and space in front of the sidewalk or something like that?
Uh, well, it begins at the property line. The property line typically begins at the one foot from the side.
Actually, the village... Runs footprint.
No, I didn't. But if you put...
And if you see what you're transitioning, you have actually a five-foot minimum.
Little less than 30 seconds.
So without, you wouldn't be allowed to, based on this definition, they couldn't have put it within five feet of the property line in front, current. And that's also for a side street yard. So remember, like, if they're on a corner lot.
So there's your setback, Mario. That sounds like setback to me.
My concern is, Chuck, correct me if I'm wrong, five feet would put you just inside the sidewalk?
No, 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 the property line...
His property line is on the outside of the sidewalk.
The inside of the sidewalk.
Between the house and the sidewalk, that's where...
I thought on your part at 24 was on the other side of the sidewalk.
You can measure the setback from the curb. So it all depends, what we're talking about, property line is different than the setback. Sometimes you measure the setback from the curb to the building.
You know, you always measure, you always measure the setback from the property line.
Chuck, when he's in Rochester, he does crazy things.
Evidently.
And he gets away with it.
We did a measurement from the curb to the building. So with the...
But it was a different measurement.
Well, but typically, in most situations, you, you start at the property line and then you measure five...
Now, does five feet give us our clear corner vision as far as...
No, that's in addition to that.
You need 12 feet for that.
Right. So that's separate.
So we need 12 feet, why don't we just make it 12 feet?
Because, because it's 12 feet, because then it's only 12 feet from the driveway. So then once he gets past that, then he get closer and he get five feet from, closer to the side.
That's kind of where you have a street or a driveway.
Right.
Well, he's got a driveway.
Right.
But not everybody's.
Right, but, but that does, so the clear vision triangle is supposed to be when a car is parked there, they can look out on each side. But you don't necessarily need to have it 12 feet perpendicular to the car. It goes at an angle 12 feet from the other side.
But because in this particularly zoning district, many of these properties have neighbors who have driveways.
Right.
You don't want to block their vision.
You wouldn't, because, because, because it's blocked, because it's within any driveway. It's adjacent to any driveway. So they can't necessarily put it up in a clear vision triangle that blocks their neighbors because they can't do that.
So that ordinance would apply, that would protect...
Protect the driveways.
I still think five feet is too close. Because I think people are going to do...
Yeah.
It's going to be too close to the sidewalk and the pedestrians. But that's my opinion.
You can leave it five feet, but you still have the provision that says that it has clear vision. So everybody is five feet.
We're in on that.
But if you're in a situation where you require for vision, then your five feet doesn't...
As long as you're allowing vision.
It's only going to be a driveway or a corner.
Right.
So you don't have a problem with the storage being that close to the sidewalk?
Five feet?
Oh, no, it'd only be...
Five. In certain areas, it'll be five feet.
Okay.
C1 transition.
All right, five feet?
There aren't much in five feet, folks. No, hell, it's four feet, so just to give you an idea.
Yeah.
Well, five feet is what you can't use. So you would still have 10 feet. Because you're 15 feet from...
I don't put anything in the front setback.
I'm not saying you do, I'm saying you'd still have 10 feet. Right? Because if we took five for the setback, you'd have 10 feet of front yard.
I mean, the problem with putting stuff in the front yard setback is you got your sign there. So you put stuff all through your block and your sign, so it's not feasible to do it. So I have like nothing in the front setback. Because I can't block my sign, otherwise I'm, you know, damn, this on... You've got to worry about cutting leaves and sprinklers are running and it's not feasible to put it in the front yard. You've got sprinklers and...
Right.
Grass and signs. I don't have any other.
So, Mario, do you think you have enough yet to, um, to put something together for us?
Well, yeah, I have that, that's four. The answer is four A. Four B, hard front back from the side or rear property line should be required. Right now, there's no restrictions from the side or rear. Are we okay with that?
And I, um, I think that in adjacent neighbors, residents, residences, that could be a problem in some situations and not others. So I think that a consideration of setback should be made...
Rear property setback?
For rear and side yards.
So, so that, that's part of question five, and so that would be, we could have a setback if, if...
If the outside display will take place of butts residential property, what setback or screening requirements will be required?
And right now, those ordinance, there are none.
Is fencing required to obstruct the view of materials displayed? How much setback should be required from a residential property?
And right now, the, the ordinance doesn't say anything.
If you got to answer the setback, that's redundant. Why would you have the fence if you're going to have the setback?
Well, that's what he's, is fencing required to obstruct the materials, question mark? New question is, or how much setback is required from residential property? So you're right, it's redundant. You either want it fenced or you don't want it fenced, but it's can't be sitting on top of the property line is what he's asking.
With a 30-foot or 40-foot lot, they got a 10-foot setback, that guy's still nowhere.
Right.
I still think if there's a residential use... I want to say what I'll consider to be a legal residential use, not necessarily conforming. It could be non-conforming, but if it's a legal non-conforming use next door, there needs to be a setback.
Yeah, because when I look at the zoning map, so many residential properties interact or are adjacent to C1 transition properties. I mean, potentially, there are a lot of people impacted by that. We don't address it.
And so, yeah, so you're right, we don't address it. So really, the issue when it comes to this kind of situation is, is whether they would be, feel like it's impacting them by looking and seeing some display of some items. And normally, and, and it's usually a setback works if, in areas with larger lots and larger setbacks anyway. So I would say if you're really concerned about visually impacting the neighbors, a screen is what you'd want to consider. Because that's the only thing that could prevent someone from, because we're just so, we're close, we're, we're very close to each other, property owners. So if you want to address it, then, yeah, it might be some form of fencing or screening or something like that. If.
So is the flavor a setback or is the flavor a screening? Screening would obscure the view of the display.
As an adjective, it means not discovered or...
He answered my question.
There you go.
Nice. We should listen to you.
Wow, thanks, Sherry.
Okay, let's all picture Chuck's property and let's pretend there's, I think you've got a fence, don't, don't you?
I got a chain link.
Okay, yeah.
Yeah.
So let's pretend that fence isn't there. So Chuck's got all this stuff in his yard. There's no fence and it's a residential property next to him.
And I'm at the property line.
And you're at the property line. And I really don't know if you are or not.
Pretty much.
So I want to go out and look at Chuck's stuff. I got to cross onto the neighbor's property, walk all the way around and get a good look at what he's selling.
Or if I'm sitting here having me a nice cocktail in my yard, I get to look at his stuff.
Yeah.
I'm just questioning.
I want all the ladies at the home there and they're all going to sign my petition.
We don't care about those old ladies, Chuck. Any more than we care about all the old ones.
Well, you know, with the prop, because of what Mario says, we are, we are packed in here like sardines. A setback is logistically challenging to impose upon anybody because there's just not enough room. I mean, you're going to put a 25-foot setback on property lines?
You've got a restricted...
That doesn't, that doesn't work, you know, because...
It restricts envelope for the display.
The properties are too small to put that kind of, you know, a five-foot setback. All you're doing is making sure the giraffe doesn't hang over into somebody's yard, right? And so, you know, in that regards, then, I think some type of screen would be a reasonable suggestion.
In what height? Six-foot height?
Six-foot height, yeah, I mean...
That giraffe is still going to peek over, just like...
I mean, you know...
Try to get away.
You know, the, the, in order to be really effective, a setback would have to be significant. And it's hard to do that with these property sizes because, you know, you, how do you put it?
You make a good point.
How do you put a 25-foot setback on a 100-foot wide property? I mean, that's...
How about a 70?
Yeah, you know, so that doesn't really work. And so, you know, if, if you're going to try to protect the residents around a commercial property, it should be screened. And that can be with foliage, it can be with a chain link fence and solo cups pushed into it. I mean, I don't know, I don't know how they want to do it.
Oh, I really don't think the resident wants solo cups.
They'd rather look at the display, I guess, probably.
Chuck's probably selling that in his backyard anyway.
If we do want to...
If this one gets this the other way, let's say my chain link fence, well, there is a setback already. The setback is the property owner to myself, their setback from the property line already. Their setback, let's say 20 feet. Now we're talking about their setback, now I'm going to setback. We're going to have like 40 feet from, you know what I'm saying? Because they already, they already are setback. They have a setback. So do we want...
That's how all setback happens.
Well, I understand, I understand that, Chuck, but you know, I've got to, I've got to also consider every situation, you know. And, and, you know, I mean, you know, your, your building is kind of close to the property line. And if we're going to run into a situation someday where I've got a residence, a fence and a resident, and a business, and how, how do we accommodate these? I mean, it's, it's not always a 20-foot setback for everybody.
Now, when you, when you factor in...
Saying that there is a, in many cases, a setback.
I understand, but that, it may not always be that case.
And when you factor that in, you're basically telling the, the property owner, you're placing a business's obligation to screen, if that's what you're concerned about, you're putting that obligation on the adjacent property owner and you're telling them, well, you have to have your uses and however you enjoy your, your property 20 feet back in order to get that.
And that's not realistic, I mean, that's...
That's not.
That's not really realistic, yeah, yeah.
You're imposing a requirement.
No, so I, I think the, the business owner who wants to just have outdoor storage has the responsibility to be responsible in his neighborhood and make sure that he's been a good neighbor. And if that, and that should involve, or it should incorporate some degree of, of privacy.
To, to, especially if there's no building, you have the setback in the building, it's a yard. If someone wants to go out and enjoy their yard, they can be free to enjoy their yard.
Yeah.
So typically, when it comes to screening, what we usually do, if you want to use some broad lang, not broad, but language, you can require a, a screen, a screening wall, either composed of a six-foot high fence or a opaque landscape barrier. Meaning someone could put, you know, shrubs and that sort of thing. But the only problem with that is that typically, they'll put in small shrubs and then they'll do it, they say, oh, it's going to grow over time and then people are going to go, oh, I can still see through. So, so that's the only problem with utilizing landscape materials. So really, you're only talking about a, if you want an opaque visual barrier, you're talking about a fence. Is that what we're referring to?
Let me just ask the question. So now we have the Lakewood salt guy, he has a residential house next to him. So it's fenced with the in the front yard, not allowed.
The salt guy would be...
We're talking side yard, we're not talking front yard, right?
Well, not only that, but the salt guy, we're going to write outdoor display and we're going to give them the opportunity to, to put it out and take it in every day.
Well, wouldn't it? Just so if you leave it out at night, that's, that's...
That's storage.
If it's out, it's out. The neighbor can see it during the day. I mean, it's a lot more abrasive to have it in the daytime than it is the guy that's leaving it out at nighttime.
But you're discussing front yard and we're discussing side yard, right?
Right.
We're talking at side, side and back, side and back.
Okay, but front yard is different.
The side yard, his neighbor is a yellow house.
Okay, but that's in his front yard.
The house is lined up with this building.
I know where the house lines up, Chuck. I look at it every day when I pull out my driveway. But he puts his salt on the M24 side of the building, which is his front yard. We're going to have different regulations for front yard than we do for the side yard. A little less every day. But... I'm with that, yeah. Okay, we're good.
Are you closer, Mario?
Yeah, I think so. I mean, if you want screening, I think that's, that's going to be a fence and that's going to be only adjacent to residentially-used property.
Mm-hmm.
Or zoned, used or zoned.
Yep.
Could be vacant.
Residential property. And then, so, yeah, I mean, that answers question five. Question four is answered. I hate to jump back, but question three was, uh, well, that was the out, left out overnight and I think we addressed that by, by just with all that other discussion we've had.
Yep.
Yeah, that's it.
Lighting wasn't discussed, Joe.
I'm sorry, which one?
Lighting.
Lighting.
Oh, right, yeah, that's one other one, lighting.
Um, which is 3B.
Yep. Be required or allowed to have outside lighting? Do you want to re...
Do we have requirements for outdoor lighting in general right now? I think we do, don't we?
Well...
You know, there's limitations on, you know, making sure you don't shine in somebody else's windows and...
Right.
That you're not creating light pollution.
And the candles not too bright.
I would like to, you know, I would like to see that property owners have the ability to light outdoor storage but are not required to.
Possibly we could say if a, um, outdoor display sales proposes lighting, they just must be in compliance with the lighting ordinance. they just must be in compliance with the lighting ordinance.
I'm good with that.
I'd also like to get the recommendation of the chief of police.
So also, when these, when these temporary use permits come before us, is this a plan that's also reviewed by the police and by the fire department?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay, good. Leslie?
I have a question about whether we need to address signage in any way for outdoor display, or would the signage, like the lighting, would the signage ordinance apply? So, okay.
I would expect that's the case.
Yeah, they wouldn't get any additional...
No.
Uh, signage, they just adhere to the signage.
No, hell's bells, outdoors, outdoor storage is a sign you can have. That's the best sign you can have.
Takes them away from them.
You know? That chicken is more of a sign than unique stuff is, I think. You know, if people notice the chicken, they don't notice the sign.
I like to say, I don't even know where the chicken is, I haven't seen the chicken.
You've got to go see him, he's awesome.
I drive by every day, I have not seen the chicken.
All right, so Mario, are you good?
Yes.
Do you, do you think you have enough to put together a draft for us and bring it back to us? Before our next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. All right, ladies and gentlemen, is there, are there any other things that you would like to address during this discussion?
Don't leave.